To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda for A, approval of the regulars council meeting agenda for September 25th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes from August 28th, 2023 council meeting. Did you receive any changes or anything? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve as president.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, five B. Approval of the special meeting minutes from the August 30th, 2023 council meeting. Anything different there? Okay.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five C. Approval of the closed session meeting minutes from the August 30th, 2023 meeting.
All right, thank you.
Any comments? Any changes? Could we get a motion, please?
So moved.
Support. It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Yes, Joel, they're on their way. Next on the agenda is five D. Approval of the special meeting minutes from the September 6th, 2023 council meeting.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
Did you get that, Michaela? Thank you. Next on the agenda is the first reading of ordinances and scheduling a public hearing. Seven A is first reading and scheduling of a second reading and public hearing for the October 9th, 2023 council meeting of ordinances. Five 11, to amend chapters 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 7.5, 10, 10.5, 11, 14, 15, 18, and 21 of the City of Alleghen Code of Ordinances. Joel, please.
Yeah, thank you. Just some brief history for council. Again, tonight is just the first reading and the scheduling of that public hearing and second reading at your next meeting in October. So you're not officially approving these ordinances tonight. So about a year and a half ago, city council began the process of working with staff and updating or reviewing and making changes where needed to our code of ordinances. We have got, we are going through every single chapter. This represents roughly 60% of our, you know, chapters so far. These ordinances have been shared with council during a special meeting and then we had another special meeting with city council where, or with our city attorney, where four of the council members were able to be present and we reviewed the chapters that are on the screen and that the mayor just recited. After that meeting with the city attorney, councilmember Xanderis Hands, Morgan, and Mayor Galloway requested that these chapters be brought to the city council for a first reading to continue this process with this set of chapters. I do want to point out that after discussion with the finance director Tracy Stahl, our city attorney, and our auditor, there's a recommendation to change chapter two to add the $5,000 limit for all staff and then anything between 5,000 and 10,000 would be the city manager and then above 10,000, we come to council. The purpose for that is to help evaluate and determine our capital assets, which we have to go through as part of our audit process. So Tracy read that and said, you guys really need to put that $5,000 limit back into that ordinance. And that is what's in the, that's in that ordinance in your packet. We have summaries of each ordinance in the PowerPoint and we can go chapter by chapter. I assume that council has read those or we could just jump to chapters that you may have questions on.
I don't either.
Okay.
I'm fine just seeing if anybody has questions.
I just, I mean, this is a little silly, but the title of chapter four and the references within chapter four of alcoholic liquors sounds redundant to me. It sounds like saying fast race cars. I'm sure it's a legal term, but alcoholic liquors, do we have to call it that? Can we not just say alcohol or liquor?
That's something we can reach out to the city attorney just to verify that there's no legal term or reference to a state law that requires it to be alcoholic liquors. And that's a change we can make before the adoption at your second reading.
It's cosmetic, but it was bothering me as I read through it.
Does anybody have any other questions on any of these ordinances or anything they'd like to see different? Us that were at that meeting, we were pretty pleased with how they were.
I'll make a motion to schedule the second reading and a public hearing for October 9th of the stated ordinances.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, number eight is public hearings and adoption of ordinance. Eight A, adoption of emergency ordinance 512, to amend chapter 17, offenses of the City of Alleghen Code of Ordinances to authorize discharge of a bow and arrow in connection with a wildlife control hunt approved by the city council. Joel?
So this is a emergency adoption being requested by city staff. Chapter 17, which was not part of the ordinances you just reviewed, dash 201 subsection D says discharge, it shall be unlawful for any person to discharge any sting shot or bow and arrow from or across any street, alley, sidewalk, or public road within the limits of the city or on or across any public land. We are recommending we add the following language at the end of that, except on a property, on a properly constructed and supervised target range or, this is the part we're adding, as part of a wildlife control hunt authorized by city council. The reason staff is asking that we amend this ordinance to allow council to authorize a wildlife control hunt is we've had an increased number of deer that have taken home at the Pageam Field Airport, a city-owned airport off Grand Street, also known as 222. The airport advisory board has discussed this issue for probably years is probably a safe way to say that. As long as I've been here, I've been here since 2017. In the past couple of years, that discussion has become a little more active from the pilots. We've reached out to other airports on how they handle increased deer on their property and there are multiple ways to do that. One of the ways that you do it is you have a silhouette of a predator animal like a coyote. We have that on the field there and we move it around occasionally, you know, per best best management practices for that. The other way is to install animal fencing, eight-foot-high fencing around the perimeter. That is part of our capital improvement plan for the airport. Our plan is to install that in 2027. And then a third way is through a calling of the deer, a deer calling program, a removal program. It is, as I mentioned, been discussed at the city, at the airport advisory board. They would like council to authorize a wildlife control hunt on the airport property. We'll discuss it later on in the meeting agenda, how we would do that. But before we discuss how we will do that, we would need council to authorize this change to the ordinance. The need for the emergency ordinance, which is afforded to council in your city charter, is October 1st is the start of bow and arrow season for deer hunting. And we're coming up on October 1st. And so we would like to start this on October 1st. Any questions about this ordinance? By moving to approve this ordinance, you're not approving the deer hunt right now, but you are opening the door for that.
So later on in this, are we going to discuss if they have to be, if the deer has to be on the property or the hunter has to be on the property or how that all is going to work?
Yeah.
I didn't.
Yeah, so later on.
I didn't see that.
Twenty-three, twenty-seven, authorizing the bow hunt. We explained in our resolution of that, under the be it resolves and further resolves and further resolves, how that program would work. And we can go, and we can review that at that time. And if you'd like to add some other stipulations, we can add stipulations at that time. And just for your information right now, if you didn't get through that resolution, this is only going to be offered to city employees. DPW Director Doug Codman, which oversees the airport for us, will be the only person that can decide which city employees can and cannot do it. We plan on only having a couple on the site at a time, you know, during the removal. And I think right now we have about seven or eight.
Seven.
Seven, seven city employees have shown interest in doing this. They have to use their own equipment, do it on their own time and use their own, if I use the wrong term, I apologize, but their own deer tags to, yes, you know, remove the animal.
Not really. I think the only reason we need this because it's public land, because our ordinance forbids it on public land. But if you're on private property, you can use bow and arrow going by our ordinances as long as it doesn't cross a street.
Yeah.
The airport has discussed this extensively. We've looked at fencing, we've discussed fencing.
They've talked about fencing for 20 years.
But in order to do that, it's a 10-foot-high fence and I don't even know the cost on that when it comes up to that year, when we're going to do that, if that'll fit into the capital improvement plan because it is very expensive to do such a high fence all the way around the airport. But this is one way I think that could help control some of the deer because there has been quite a few incidents, especially in the evening or in the mornings. And coming into land is the most dangerous time. So usually if you see a pilot go buzz the airport and not actually land, it's because they're checking the field for deer before they dare to actually land. There's some good pictures of airplanes versus deer crashes and it's not very pretty.
So could I get a motion to adopt this?
I move we adopt this.
I'll second.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Right?
Unfortunately, motion does not carry.
Did you say aye?
I said aye, but it's not.
Has to be five to two for emergency ordinances.
Oh, okay.
So the ordinance does not carry.
Failed.
Correct.
Sorry. I thought it was four, three. Okay. Next on the agenda is number nine, public comment. Anyone who has any public comment, please step to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Joel Leverance, Baker Alleghen Studios, Old Mill Iron down in the Mill District. As you know, I'm working on the, the former Pingree Park project, looking into my due diligence. On Friday, I met with a representative from Eagle. We walked the property extensively. He had a good feeling about it. He told me he believed that a large portion of the property is not wetlands. So he recommends I get a wetland delineation study done on the property, which is going to be pretty pricey, minimum of $1,500. That's if the DNR does it. DNR or the Eagles currently doesn't have a representative to handle 303 wetlands delineations. Means I got to hire an outside company to do that. So I'm talking with one right now. I haven't gotten an estimate yet. So what I'm asking here tonight is if I could get something more in writing that says that we are going to enter an agreement to purchase this property. Right now, we're just kind of, you know, on kind of a handshake, right? But before I start spending a great deal of money, I would like to have something a little bit more firm. I've already spent close to $500 so far getting this meeting set up with Eagle and bringing out contractors to give me estimates on the plumbing, estimates on clearing some of the land and other stuff. So before I spend a great deal of money, which it's, it's starting to get into that phase, I would like to see if we could do something a little more legal, should I say? So I'm asking the city council if they would consider doing that. I spoke to Joel earlier and he said he can see if he could put something together and see where we can go from there. But it's looking positive. We're excited about it. Deb has to keep reeling me in because I'm like, ooh, I can buy this piece of equipment. Ooh, I can buy this wood. Look at, there's this guy's got this big stuff over here. I can buy that. And she's like, no. So, so yeah, I'm excited. It's looking promising and so I would like to take it to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else have any public comment?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Greenwood. I live actually north of town at 3189 125th. So I don't know if I'm still allowed to say something. Hopefully so.
Certainly.
I'll make this quick. In a prior life, I worked on the zoning board of appeals in Douglas, Michigan. I did that from about 2006 to 2020, then I then moved to where I am north of town here. It is just very enjoyable to me as I walk through the streets of Alleghen to see what has been a dormant town, pretty much on decline ever since I can remember, to really see things starting to come together. I don't think that that stuff just happens by circumstance, certainly. So, and I realize a lot of people have to take credit for this, but I would just say, you know, congratulations to y'all. It's, it's really fun to, to walk through this town and see what's going on and just envision what the future will be. Now, in a couple of months, I'm moving out to the state of Wyoming to pursue my next chapter in my life and I might even get back into local government and all that good stuff then. But I'll be watching from afar. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Madam Mayor, is not appropriate time for me to speak?
Yes, it is. Yep.
Thank you very much. Mayor Galloway, honorable members of council. Bob Junetsky with a brief update from your county clerk and register of deeds offices. I appreciate the opportunity. You know, Madam Mayor, if you're anything like Councilman Zeter, you're up nervous, scared, worried late at night because Rudy Giuliani comes on TV and he tells you, you got to watch out for property fraud and title theft. People are out to get it. I'm here to help with that situation. We rolled out of the register of deeds office last year, as you're aware, property fraud alert. Anyone who owns property in Alleghen County can go to our website at the register of deeds office or call in and talk to one of the friendly deputy registers and make sure that their property is signed up for that such that if someone tries to record something on or in your name over at the register of deeds office, that you get a phone call or an email to inform you of that so you can take action right away. I know for a fact that it works because I received a call in my office last week. Woman was very concerned. She said, I got an email from your office, somebody recorded something on my name and this is just, I don't know what's going on, but it's, it's very bad. I said, Mom, calm down. I said, let's look it up. And I looked it up on, on our website, which you can also do. I said, did you recently pay off your mortgage? She said, yes, yes, I think about five days ago. I said, I think that's what the notice was about. So make sure you sign up for that if you have any interest in, in property anywhere in Alleghen County. We are across the street working on prepping for the November election. You dodged that bullet this time around, but we know we'll be busy for you next year. We do appreciate very much that your city manager and clerk have been very generous with these very chambers to do elections training and that's been very helpful and hoping we can bother you a few times next year as next year gets big. Didn't know if you were aware or not, manager died, but we do now have the 48th Circuit Court records online up until March of this year. If you, if somebody ran over a city sign and you need to see where that, where that court case was, you had to either call over to 113 Chestnut between the hours of eight and five or, or stop on by that customer service window. Well, now you can go online and, and check that out. You don't even have to call the city manager to see where things are. Or if you're like me and you want to know if that lady friend you met at the VFW is, or if her divorce is complete or not, you can go on at midnight and find out if she's single yet. Wanted to next draw your attention to the annual, to the annual report to taxpayers that I put out earlier this year for the year 2022. I'm not going to read the entire thing to you because Clerk Cleaver likes to go cover to cover, read every word with a cup of tea after this meeting. So I'm just going to hit some of the highlights if that's okay. First, if you turn to page eight, mentioned some of those election trainings that we did last year. And in prepping this annual report, my elections coordinator came to me and she said, how many elections inspectors do you think you trained for this year? I said, it was a big year. We trained a lot of people, a lot of people. I said, might have been 150. She said, try 683. So last year was an all-time record for the number of election inspectors that we trained in Alleghen County. Unfortunately, we're expecting to break that record next year as we now have 27 days of early voting thrown in with the three election days that we already had. But that'll create some new excitement for us. Next, we'd like to remind you that on page 11, there are no longer any birthing hospitals in Alleghen County. So in most cases, people would go to Kalamazoo or Grand Rapids or Holland. So all of the births that are recorded are, at our office now are home births. And we set a record for home births in 2022 with 42. That bested the record from the year before of 39 home births. If you turn to page 15, just a quick reminder that we did roll out our Alleghen County Veterans ID card. Very excited to present that. So if you have a veteran in your life who has recorded his or her papers of honorable discharge at our office, or if they need to bring that in, we'd love to see them and for just 10 minutes of their time and a quick picture, we can send them out the door with that. That'll, that will help them access benefits and discounts, not just in Alleghen County, but for nationwide companies. On the top of page 23, we get into some real estate news for last year. As you're aware, for several years in a row, the white-hot Michigan real estate market showed itself and we set a couple of records in the register of deeds office with the number of mortgages and, and land documents, land transfers recorded. Last year in 2022, those fell off significantly. If you look at the chart on the top of page 23, we see that maroon bar and that gray bar and that decline, the first decline like that in several years. However, if you turn the page and look at the top on 24, that blue wave up at the top shows you that the overall value of lands that changed hands in Alleghen County was still slightly higher than the year before, which was a record breaker. Not sure we're going to see those kind of records this year in 2023. Finally, if you look at page 26, Alleghen County folks are on the move. And at the bottom, you see that we set an all-time record for the number of passport applications that we handled over at the register of deeds office with 392 for the entire year. We already broke that record this year in August, about mid-August, we hit 394 and we, we continue to, to see those go up. Finally, a word, as you're aware, next year, we've got proposal 2022, I'm sorry, proposal 2022, where we'll now be forced to offer at least 29 days, 27 days, excuse me, of early voting. That's going to create a huge challenge. Our local clerks are going to need all the support that we can give them. This presents a, a big challenge as far as recruiting election, election inspectors and as far as their job descriptions. So very hopeful that the city council and the city of Alleghen is willing to do that because our entire job descriptions have changed markedly with one vote of last year, last November. With that, I'll take any questions you might have on property fraud alert, the annual report or proposal 2 of 2022. Sir?
I've heard there are some municipalities that are combining election sites for that early voting period. Are folks doing that in Alleghen County? Is that something your office supports?
There are, I, I, I support it and it's, it's definitely within anybody's right, any jurisdiction's right to do that. In Alleghen County, the township of Hopkins and the township of Monterey have combined for one municipal agreement. The city of Fenville has joined with Manley's Township, Ganges Township, Clyde Township, and Lee Township to form another municipal agreement. And the final one is between Sagittalk Township and Sagittalk City. Other than that, everyone else is conducting elections on their own in their own municipality.
Is there like a timeline for when that can be done for an election? Like, do they need to register that agreement a certain period beforehand?
They had to send it to us about a week ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's good to see everybody.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening. My name is Sam Martin. I am not a resident of Alleghen City. I am a resident of Alleghen Township. I reside in Minor Lake, 2467 Lorraine Drive, for reference, if that's required. I am the Lake Association President of Minor Lake and I also serve as the, the president of the Minor Lake Improvement Board, which is a function of the Alleghen Township Board. I've been in those capacities for approximately since 2008 and been a resident there since 2003. I come to the board this evening to speak about concern that we have in Minor Lake around progress or arguably lack of progress around options for extending a sewer project to Minor Lake. So if you'll allow me a real quick background, I'll keep this very brief. But we've had interest in the past for sewer project at Minor Lake going all the way back into the seventies. But in my experience, more recently in 2007, 2008, we had an attempt that failed very, very, by a very slim minority, approximately 49 to 51%. And so we tried again recently and as recently as 2021, I surveyed our residents. We have approximately 260 homes around the lake. Minor Lake is about a, it's about a 320-acre lake with 12 miles of shoreline, for those that are not familiar with it. But we surveyed our residents and asked whether they were interested in pursuing a sewer project again. And we had overwhelming response. This is actually on our website, minorlake.com or minorlake.org. And the overwhelming majority, well in excess of 70%, said they were absolutely interested, strong yes, in getting updated project numbers on this. And we, and well over, if you total up the, the amount that were interested or felt that it was necessary to have a sewer project, that was well in excess of 60% felt that it was necessary as well. So with that mandate, we went to the Alleghen Township Board and asked them to revisit a updated sewer study. And so that was, happened in approximately the spring of 2022. They engaged Fleece and Brandon Brink and that's, that study was actually returned in early 20, or summer of 2022. That study identified three, two funding options, the primary of which was a USDA Rural Development Fund grant that we would qualify for and a low interest rate loan. And also identified three options for treatment. One, the preferred, was to engage the Alleghen Treatment Plant. The second was to engage Hopkins and their lagoon system. And the third was to pursue the possibility of a local treatment option. And the third was to pursue the possibility of a local treatment option. We had a couple possibilities for that. So we proceeded forward with that. And we knew that that would involve completing this USDA grant application. We expected that to be submitted late December of 2022 at the possibly the absolute latest in February of 2023. We are sitting here today, and that grant application has not been filed successfully. The reason it is not is it is waiting on one single thing, which is an agreement between the city of Alleghen and Alleghen Township on an updated sewer agreement. So I don't know the degree to which that topic has come before the council. But my understanding is that there is contention around whether or not some properties that border the city of Alleghen should be compelled to hook up to sewer. And that that particular contract is here. So it's here. So we're now in a spot where many months have passed. Increased interest rates have resulted in, you know, a number of folks in my community that are beginning to wonder two things, whether they really are in support. And second of all, whether or not the city of Alleghen is really an interested and reliable partner. So I want to just bring this to your attention. In conversations I've had with the Alleghen Township Board, they believe they are at an impasse and have expressed that they do not know what the next steps are. And so I don't know, again, whether this is a topic that has come before the council, whether this is something that you are aware of, and if you have any questions for me or if there's anything that we can do to clarify in any regard on this.
Yeah. In regards to the funding sources you mentioned, what all would that cover?
Sure. So the one that we are pursuing is a USDA Rural Development Grant and Low Interest Rate Loan. So it's a 40-year low-interest rate loan that in February would have been approximately, roughly, a 2% 40-year loan. With the quarterly Fed increases, now that has gone up by well over 2% to 2.5%. So that's the base of that. That program also has the option of the USDA program providing a grant at a 2550 or theoretically even a 75% grant. We have no reasonable expectation that we will get a significant grant, but under the program, they could provide a actual money grant. But we would qualify for the 40-year low-interest rate loan as part of the township. And that's what we would be pursuing.
And would that cover, because I imagine it's quite pricey to run a pipe to Minor Lake and all around it.
That does, yeah. It would cover the entire construction costs. And then my understanding is how that would happen is that the actual, once the project is completed, it would be handed over to the servicing agent that would then execute the service from there on. I work in healthcare and technology. I'm not a contractor in that regard, but I've come to know a bit more about this project than I did a few years ago. But that's what the project would work, is it would be covered under that. And from that point on, Alleghen Township would not administer or would not have authority over it. It would be handed over, so. And so the ongoing monthlies would be between, it would be a special district that would be handed over and operated.
Okay, Sam, so you're over your three-minute limit. We've got quite a big meeting agenda tonight.
No, thank you.
So we will talk about this as a council and then just watch our agendas or, you know, I don't know if, then when it gets on there, you can come back and be...
Thank you. I do not appreciate a three-minute meeting.
No, that's okay. I appreciate it.
We are in a spot where this is causing us a great deal of concern. And we're really, we really appreciate some attention on this.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jo Berry, 533 Maple Street, right here in Alleghen. Two things, and I'll make it the three minutes. The first thing is the grass next door to my home, they have made several attempts to clean it up, so I'm okay with that. I mean, I think they got a little ways to go, but they have made attempts to cut the grass. Second, and I don't know if I can do this, but I am here on behalf of Brian Jones. I'm pretty sure most of you are probably happy that he's not here, and it's me. He had to work late, number one. That's why he isn't here. I guess a couple of weeks ago, there was conversation about the city paying for the bill. He had mentioned that they did so, I don't know, something happened. Somebody paid a less amount, or the city paid a less amount for the grizzle for somebody else. And I think somebody had also mentioned that, I think it was like $200, that you guys could surely take care of $200. I don't know if that was still on the floor, if you have to make a motion on that or you need to, the council need to talk amongst themselves. I'm just trying to help him get this cleared up, and I know you guys are. I know you guys are. So what do we do?
Typically, we don't answer questions or interact at public comment time.
Okay.
And so, you know, it's something we've all listened to, and we certainly can discuss it, but it's not something we would interact with at this time.
Okay. Again, so you guys just discuss it among yourselves, and then when he comes back to the next meeting, you'll know a little bit more? Or you can't answer that either?
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Is there any further public comment? Okay. With no more public comment, we'll move on to the next...
We had two applications. One of them was for 103 River Street. It was for 103 River Street. They were installing new shingles, new aluminum soffit, and replacing two original windows on the lower rear back of their building, the lower rear of the building, along the river. Now, that application was approved by a motion of three to two. Two of the members were adamant that the windows be restored, not replaced, so. 411 Marshall Street was a deck. This deck has already been installed, so it was what we call an after-the-fact approval. And that was approved 5-0. And then the commission continued their discussion of their next steps. Not all of them were able to read the entirety of the study committee report from last year, so they wanted more time to dive into that report. That's what happened at the Historic District Commission.
Thank you, Joel. Next on the agenda is 11A2 Downtown Development Authority September Meeting. As you read in the minutes, we just discussed the downtown improvement project update. Parker gave that. The update included the weekly updates from the contractor, which is what we just kind of seen. The wayfinding signage update. Parker did participate in this. We did participate in the steering committee. We gave an update regarding the wayfinding signage project. Progress included wayfinding assessment presentation by Guide Studio. Steve Tibbetts pointed out several spelling errors and addressed them. And then I had mentioned about the electric vehicle charging stations, that we want to keep that on our minds when we're doing all this signage. And since then, we've also met, but that's not part of our, wasn't part of our DVA. And then we talked about the downtown parking lots, picking different names for them. And that was about it. Next on the agenda is 11A3 Public Spaces Commission. Bill?
Public Spaces Commission had a writeabout. We went around and looked at all the different parks and recreation areas that the city had, gave a report to Parker from each one of our, I don't know if they've all been turned in yet or not, but the last thing I know, they all had not. My recollection, everything, everything looks very good, with the exception of it needs some TLC. Our parks all need some tender loving care. We did have a cleanup on the boardwalk on the river. I don't know how that went. I was unable to attend. Somebody has to work, so I had to work. Like I said, my understanding is it went well, Parker.
Excuse me. Yeah, it went really well. We had a good turnout of volunteers. A couple of Public Spaces Commission board members, as well as other members of the public, came to join and lend a hand, bringing their own gloves and tools and helping clear out that area along the Water Street boardwalk. So it was a good morning. We were there from about, I think the DBW arrived around 8:00 AM, Joel and I shortly after that, and then the volunteers were there from about 9:00 AM till lunchtime. So then we went back out for a brief moment after lunch, too, a couple hours.
Good. Other than that, that's all that we did. Like I said, my scene, what they are, need some tender loving care. They just need some cleaning up, boards replaced that are bad, graffiti taken care of, the public bathrooms. It's a shame that our community treats them like that, ripping doors off, ripping the stools apart. They are put there for them, and they tear them apart. And like I said, that's, to me, is shameful, but other than that, that's what we did.
Thank you, Bill. Next on the agenda is 11B, the Finance Department. 11B1, request to approve accounts payable and payroll. Roger?
We have accounts payable in the amount of $2,489,362.15 and payroll in the amount of $242,535.08 for a total disbursement of $2,731,897.23. Motion to approve.
I'll support. It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Did Sari agree with that? Good, good. Next on the agenda is 11B2, request to approve the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget meeting schedule.
I'm going to handle this one real quick. We wanted to get the budget schedule for the upcoming fiscal year '25. It feels weird saying we're preparing for fiscal year '25 already. This was in your packet. I do want to point out what Tracy mentioned during the study session, that on March 25th. So before you dive into the department reviews, you will be reviewing the fee schedules and the approved vendors, so.
Oh.
We heard that earlier. It's already in there. Tracy already took care of it. Tracy put this whole schedule together. So we just need a motion for you guys to adopt that.
That's good.
And then please put these dates into your calendar.
You guys can answer somebody else's question before her.
Thank you.
But when she asks, I don't care about that. I've been coming in here too much. She asks you a question, you won't answer her question, but anybody come up before her, you ask her a question, it's because of the color of her skin, you don't ask her questions? I'll be back in two weeks. Y'all some evil-ass motherfuckers.
Joel, were you finished with that?
I believe so. So this is the schedule where I ended was, please put these dates into your calendar, if you don't mind. I know we're, you know, five, six months out for most of them, so. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is 11E, Public Works. 11E1, request to authorize a purchase order for SME for additional work on the leaking underground storage tank, Lust, located at 300 Monroe in the amount of $43,600. Doug?
Earlier this year, we hired ASME consultants to meet with Eagle and come up with a... Guidelines, if you all are programmed, to get the storage, the USD, the underground storage tank site, to closure. What Eagle suggested and what they're looking for is monitoring sites and monitoring wells on the parcel. And they want those sampled quarterly for a 12-month period. So ASME is proposing, if you look on the map, three new wells, which are located by the red dots. And we were able to find monitoring wells 105, 104, 101, 102, and those down below. And at those locations, they like to take soil samples. So they do some soil borings and collect the soil samples at those green dot locations. So what we're asking for now is allow ASME to go ahead and proceed with that project so we can get closure on the site.
Does anybody have any questions for Doug?
I just have a quick question. Doug, would this require a budget adjustment, then?
Yes, a budget adjustment will be needed.
Okay. And this was, this was the project that went like way back, like almost a decade or something that they just realized was never closed, so are requiring the monitoring. Okay. I guess that's better than having to dig it all out, at this point.
This is something we have to do.
I'll make a motion to approve the PO.
I'll support. It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is 11E2, request to adopt Resolution 23.27 to authorize a bow hunt at the Pageam Field Airport for animal control purposes. I guess we don't have to do that.
So what I recommend is that we just let the minutes show that due to the ordinance not passing, that this item, you know, was moot.
Next is 11E3, request to adopt Resolution 23.28 to authorize the mayor to sign the MDOT contract to design a six-unit hangar building at Pageam Field Airport.
The next two items basically go hand in hand. The airport capital improvement program includes construction of a new T-hanger in the future. In order to get that ball rolling, we have to design the site work and the building itself. Tonight, we're asking that you, mayor, be allowed to sign those agreements with MDOT, which would pay for 100% of the cost, estimated cost of $55,000 for Pryne Newhoff to do the design work. Now, that was funded from a 2021 grant, and that particular grant allowed for 100% of federal coverage. So we don't have nothing to pay for it, so 100%.
Is there any questions for Doug on either one of these? And then we can motion each one of them separate. Okay.
Move to adopt Resolution 23.28.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 11E4, request to authorize a purchase order for Pryne Newhoff Engineering, for engineering services to design a new T-hanger building and associated site work at Pageam Field Airport in the amount of $55,000.
The engineering work will be done by Pryne Newhoff. We will not receive any invoices. The invoices will go directly from Pryne Newhoff to MDOT. This is just allowing the contract between the city and Pryne Newhoff to happen.
I'll make a motion for approval of the PO for Pryne Newhoff.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next. Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda is 11F, City Manager and City Clerk. 11F1, request to approve the 2024 public meeting schedule.
Yes, the schedule was in your packet. City Clerk Michaela decided to get this into this packet now, so we don't forget about it later down the road. It establishes all the meetings that are public in the upcoming year.
I must admit, it needs to take into account the holidays that we have on Mondays. Michaela? Like when we move them to the Tuesday, if there's like a meeting on a holiday?
So if there doesn't happen to be any instances that would affect a Council Monday, we would have been affected if the city was still observing Columbus Day, I believe, as a holiday. But since we removed that and replaced that with Juneteenth starting this year, that was no longer a problem.
Great, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 public meeting schedule.
Second?
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is communication from City Manager, Council, and Mayor. Doug, do you have anything else? Tracy? Michaela? Parker?
Nothing other than reiterating it was a successful cleanup of the Water Street boardwalk. It was a good turnout. We're very happy.
Good.
And the results are, a nice couple of view sheds in the Kalamazoo River, so.
Yeah, it looks really nice. Joel?
Sure, I have a handful of things I'd like to share with council.
Okay.
First, earlier this week, the MBDC reached out to us, and they are going to be working with Parker in regards to a series of stories highlighting all the good things happening in Alleghan. And so when you reach out, not reach out, but when you refer back to the earlier comment from that gentleman who was moving to Wyoming, and how excited he's seen to see all the improvements happening down here, I think it's kind of a positive thing. I got a phone call today from a person that used to work for the Grand Rapids Press, and she's now on to a new job, lead editor for online magazine, and wants to do a series of stories of what's going on in Alleghan. So that's also, you know, another positive thing, you know, that we should be proud of. I have a meeting set up. I'm in the process of setting up a meeting with a representative from Allen Edwin Holmes, who has seen on news stories the growth that's happening in Alleghan, and would like to know, you know, how they can be part of it. So I'm going to hold them, not hold them, but I'm going to host them for lunch, and give them a drive around the community, not just the city, but the community as a whole, to talk about potential investments. In between the study session and this session, I mentioned to a handful of council members, 123 NET, which is installing fiber throughout Alleghan County, called me to make me aware that they are going to be coming into the city with the fiber. When this first started, I was informed that they wouldn't be coming into the city because we already have cable modems and, you know, cable internet, but they're going to be coming down 222 on the Water Street, Water the State, so down by the Perrigo Lab there, then up Brady to Hubbard, then Hubbard out to Ely, and now Ely. So not even remotely close to covering most of the city, but the fact that they're coming through the heart of our business, and we're going to coordinate with them. Since we're putting conduit underground as part of our downtown improvement project, they're going to be working with us to, you know, use our conduit as part of the means to get, you know, fiber into our downtown, which is kind of, you know, it's a neat project, I think, for the city, and it's a good feather in our cap.
Joel, how far away from that fiber do you have to be to use it? Do you know?
So they're going to have a program established where they'll be able to run aerial lines to properties, but it's going to have to go past your building to connect to your building. But if you're, like, down the street, they're going to talk about what it would cost to run the aerials down the street. I know a couple council members have talked to me about how we have four buildings downtown and four different internet bills. And man, we sure are hoping through this process, we can go ahead and, you know, get us all on the one loop here. So that will, you know, cut our internet cost by, not a fourth, but by 75%, wherever that math works, 300%. So we're looking forward to, you know, those opportunities. In regards to electrical vehicle stations, a couple of you of, you know, I get the feeling that council would like to see us go down that road, if we can limit the cost to the city. I have signed up to be part of a state, it's a multi-state program, to install these charging stations in more remote communities. I came across my inbox a couple weeks ago, and I jumped onto that process. And so we'll see where that goes. I'm going to reach out to the company that inquired about it. Was it about two months ago? We had it on this agenda item, and then they mentioned that, you know, we'd have to pay for it. I'm going to reach out back to them, because some communities are getting these installed. And instead of charging the company rent in the parking lot, they just say, you get to collect all the money, we just want it available. And I kind of want to check with council if you think that could be an option. I mean, do we care if we get rent off these charging stations, or if we collect money from people swiping their card? I mean, if the companies want to install them and collect them, maybe we can come up with a program like that. I'm trying to get creative, because I hear from some council members, you want to see them installed, and I hear from the public, more from the public, they want me to install these downtown.
I know, like, Peter had the council member hands, that if there was a cost to the city, we could recoup that through the fees. For me personally, if there's no cost to the city to install it, then I don't feel that we would need to collect rent or fees, but...
All right.
They just announced that Michigan State was going to start charging $4 to charge per hour. That was just on the news this evening.
The Michigan State University, if you charge on their thing, they're going to charge, okay. Yeah.
Which is pretty cheap, but...
Yeah, I don't understand charging all the government, but I take your word for it. I drive a 2006 rusted-out Ford Ranger, so I don't even have power windows or cruise control. So those are just a handful of the projects that, you know, we got going on at City Hall. No one's asked me if the restrooms are, if the building's open for restrooms. The signs have been on for about two and a half weeks. So we do have, you know, the public can use the restrooms here, you know, after hours when we're closed. So that's another update that I need to give council on improvements we've made here, you know, over the past, you know, few weeks, few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Bill, do you have anything?
Other than the bathrooms, I'm concerned with what goes on with the bathrooms in our parks, with our one here at the, at the, ah, at City Hall. I don't want to see that happen here.
And I know.
You know, that worries me.
Yeah.
So...
And we'll keep an eye on that stuff.
Okay.
Very much so.
Very good.
Good.
Other than that, I have nothing.
We have cameras.
Yeah. Yeah, we have cameras.
Okay, all right. That's not going to stop it from happening.
Did it the other places, too.
I know, I know. Right. Dave, do you have anything?
Well, it sounds like we need some information on this Minor Lake project. When are we going to get that?
So I am, I know that on Friday, all of City Council and every township board member received an email from Steve Schultz, the township supervisor. Mayor Galloway forwarded the email to me Friday afternoon and asked if I can, you know, provide some insight to the email. I responded to her with the email in collaboration with Doug Swears and Tracy Stahl this morning. And then Councilmember Andress reached out to me also after the email went out, and I forwarded that email to her. I can go ahead and I'll forward, you know, our response to that whole project. I would say there's a fundamental disagreement on where we are in our negotiations with, you know, the township and our sewer ordinance. And so I'll go ahead and I'll send that email out to council. After you've had a chance to review it and digest it, I'll gladly sit down with you one-on-one, two-on-two, three-on-three, we can't get more than three. And I can, you know, we'll be able to explain, you know, where we think we are. I had Parker get the contact information for the president of the Martin Lake, Martin Minor Lake.
Minor Lake.
Last name is Martin, yeah, sorry about that, the Minor Lake Association, to find out, you know, what they're hearing. And as you see in the gist of my email, in no way are we trying to stop a project. We are approaching this from a standpoint of equality in how we treat, you know, city ratepayers compared to township ratepayers. And so that email will be coming to you now. And then again, as I mentioned, I'll gladly, once you have this email, I'll gladly sit down with you guys this week. I mean, as I mentioned before, I'm available before, during, and after work. I'll, you know, we can make ourselves available, and if you want to come in groups of twos, that might be easier as well for you.
Thank you.
I mean, other than hoping for more updates on the charging somebody for the service that we aren't providing for them, that's one of my big concerns. And then rates study seems appropriate.
Okay.
But they wouldn't understand that. I believe that there was a certified letter sent.